If you would, if you could step inside the chambers, please, and close those doors. Thank you. If the folks in the lobby that would like to participate could step inside the courtroom, and the doors be closed. Is everybody in that wanted to witness the oath of office? Ask them in the lobby if they'd want to witness. When we close the doors, we're going to close them. All right, welcome, everybody. Looks like a full house tonight. I know all of you are here to express your congratulations and see some of these things go on, so I won't take much time tonight to do the things that I've got to do. But welcome to you all. Welcome to the first city council meeting for the City of Darlington for 2020. We're glad you all are here. We hope that when you leave, you'll have safe travels when you leave here. Before we get started on the official business for the evening, I thought it would be appropriate if we took just a moment and spoke about this seat that I'm sitting in tonight that was occupied for many, many years by our friend, the Honorable Judge Daniel B. Causey III. As you know, Judge Causey went to be with the Lord Sunday. He served our community for many years, three decades, and he was a pillar of this community, and he served this bench with the utmost of professionalism, and he was a mountain of a man. The City of Darlington will miss Dan Causey. And we're so glad that he had the opportunity to serve over the years. He made a huge impact on this community, on the lives of the people that live here. Not only that, he has innate ability to make an impact on the lives of the people that stood before him. He made a difference. A great guy. Will miss Dan Causey. I would also, on a lighter note, I would like to offer my sincere congratulations to the two gentlemen who have been elected to serve. One is the mayor, and one is the councilman. Congratulations to Mayor-elect Curtis Boyd, and congratulations to Councilman-elect Howard Nettles. Both are here with you here tonight. Howard's up front in his seat. I would also like to thank those who continue to serve as a member of the Darlington City Council. The Honorable Councilwoman Sheila Lekas, who's here with us tonight. The Honorable Councilwoman Elaine Reed, who is here with us tonight. And the Honorable Councilmen Bryant Gardner, John Milling, and John Seagars, all here in attendance with you all tonight. I would also like to extend my profound appreciation to my friend Carolyn Bruce. Carolyn, for her many years of distinguished service to this town. Carolyn was a worker, and I know that although she doesn't serve on council, you won't be here in the last of her, and she'll continue to be a presence in the City of Darlington. I don't see her here. There she is. There she is. Stand up just for a minute, Carolyn Bruce, if y'all would give her a round of applause. Also, to my friend, Mayor Gloria Hines. Is Mayor Hines here tonight? I would like to take a minute to thank Gloria Bear Hines for her hard work, her never-ending drive, her persistence, her guidance, and most of all, for your friendship. You have been a great advocate for Darlington on many levels and a pioneer in many more. You will go down in history as not only the first woman to serve as our mayor, and not only the first person of color to serve as our mayor, but as a leader in the rebuilding and the transformation of a little southern town that first birthed into a new day. For that, I say, "Thank you, Mayor Hines." Thank you. Could you give her a round of applause? I've said this many times in the past, and I guess I'll keep saying, but before you can actually see your future, you really need to know a little bit about your past. In just a few minutes, I'll administer the oath of office to the new mayor of Darlington, South Carolina, but before I do, I would like to read you the names of those folks that have served as mayor of this town before him. So if you would oblige me while I read this list of names, starting in 1836. Edgar W. Charles, Dr. T. J. K. Dargan, Dr. Theodore Dargan, Moses Andrew Huggins, A.C. Spain, E. K. Dargan, John Greg McCall, John Floyd, Hyam Hines, George W. Dargan, John J. Ward, Barryman W. Edwards, John Woods, James Carter Wilcox, M.D., Wilcox Drug Store, William F. Dargan, W.M. Haynesworth, George E. Dargan, Charles S. McCullough, C.B. Edwards, Edward Colgate Dennis, Edwin Cox, J. Alexander McCloud, Edwin Fountain, G. H. Brown, Dr. O. H. Alexander, Dr. G. B. Edwards, Claude Bone, Fred B. Stem, Cecil E. Harper, Tom Buchanan, John J. Ward, Mr. Frank Wells, Albert P. Cockshell, J. Ronald Ward, Tony Watkins, and Miss Gloria Hines. Now that you know the names of those who have served in the past, it becomes my duty to introduce you to your future. I'm going to ask Curtis Boyd if he would meet me down here in the front. I hate to do it, but I want you to stand right where you are. I hate to do it, but I've got the women left, so I can't see. I want you to take your left hand and place it on this Bible, and I want you to raise your right hand, and I'm going to read this oath of office, and I would like for you to repeat after me. Can you get this like you need to, sir? I, Curtis Boyd.
I, Curtis Boyd.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this great state.
The Constitution of this great state.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
As the mayor of City of Darlington.
As the mayor of City of Darlington.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And impartially.
Impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Reposed in me.
Reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor.
And will use my best endeavor.
To preserve.
To preserve.
The peace.
The peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And purposes.
And purposes.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
So help me God. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Amen.
Several years ago, twenty-some years ago, I took the oath of office as your coroner, and my friend Scott Suggs, is he here? Scott Suggs, and he was clerk of court and stewardess, and he administered the oath of office to me and swore me in while my other good friend and classmate, Lee Flowers, was the chairman of the county council, and Robert Williams had just been elected to the State House, another one of our classmates, along with Johnny Payne in the back room. And I remember Ms. Wilhelmina P. Johnson, y'all know Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson, when she got through administering me the oath, she stood up out of her chair and she said, "Lord Jesus, I was wrong. They did amount to something." You know, and I couldn't help but think about it because Curtis was the fourth in the spoke of that wheel at St. John's High School. He was the fourth one. So I wish Ms. Johnson could have seen that, didn't I? If I could, we also have a new councilman that was elected, Mr. Howard Nettles. Could you step forward, please, and take the oath of office? Is there anybody here that you would like to participate? If you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and look toward this gentleman in the cabin. That person in the room right there. So I'm going to read this oath, and I'm going to ask you if you would to put your hands back on that Bible. Keep that hand in the air. I'm going to read it and ask you if you would, and repeat after me, please. Okay. I, Howard J. Nettles.
I, Howard J. Nettles.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of this office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution of this state.
And defend the Constitution of this state.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
As a council member of the City of Darlington.
As a council member of the City of Darlington.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly.
Fairly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavor.
And I will use my best endeavor.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes.
The purposes.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Councilman. Councilman Nettles, we'll do that one more time. He want to get a picture. Y'all bear with us for a minute. You ready? So we have two more councilmen that need to be sworn in tonight. Councilman Bryant Gardner, if you would come forward, and Councilman John Milling. It's kind of hard for a coroner to stand up being a rug in front of Judge Milling. We're going to do, if I could get you guys, if you would, to put your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand if you'd like, John Gardner. If you want to hold it up. If you'd like, John Gardner, come up and hold it, and I'm going to recite those if you would. You're part of the swearing, okay? If y'all would. John Gardner. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
As council member of the City of Darlington.
As council member of the City of Darlington.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavor to preserve.
And will use my best endeavor to preserve.
The peace and carry into effect.
The peace and carry into effect.
According to the law.
According to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Well, that kind of ends what I'm here to do tonight, but I want to thank all of you for allowing me to take part in this administer of the oath ceremony. I challenge all of you to always keep Darlington front in your mind, always keep the Good Lord on your speed dial if you care to phone, always keep the Good Lord in mind, say a prayer every once in a while. Remember that there's good folks in Darlington, and there's a lot of good going on here. We have good industry. We have a lot of jewels in this community. We have jewels in Dixie Cup. We have jewels in the racetrack, and we have jewels in Mannheim, and we have jewels in all sorts of places. But always remember this, and this old coroner's going to leave, your crown jewels are right here. These are your people. And at the end of the day, that's what you're here for, to serve these people. Congratulations to all of you, and I wish you nothing but the best of luck, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, too, so we're not having a barter, and maybe we're going straight to work. We have to have a number-two election for mayor pro temp. Are there some nominations for that?
Yes.
Ms. Elaine?
It is a privilege and an honor that I take this time to nominate a person that I have come to know as a friend, and a person that I know that has shown me that their best interest for Darlington is what he has in mind. So I'd like to nominate for our mayor pro temp none other than Councilman John Seagars.
Mayor, I would second that motion to have John Seagars elected as mayor pro temp.
Do we have any other nominations? All right, we can take a vote for Councilman John Seagars as mayor pro temp. Make a noise by raising your hand. Congratulations to Mr. John Seagars as mayor pro temp. All right, thank you, guys. I do things a little different, so I had asked that each city council meeting that we have a pastor become pray-pleader, so tonight I'd asked Pastor Kyle Myers to pray for us. If everybody would stand when he breaks, and we would say the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gardner, please, the pledge of allegiance, when he gets up.
Let's pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you on this new year. God, we thank you for new things that you're doing in the City of Darlington. God, we thank you, Lord, for the elections. God, we thank you for the democracy that the United States holds, God, and the ability as people to be able to vote. Father, we just pray that as this council and this team goes forward to lead this city, God, we pray that it would be under your leadership, under your headship. Father, that we would surrender and submit all of our ways to you, God, that in all of our ways, we would trust and acknowledge you, and you would direct the paths of this city. God, we know that you have plans for the City of Darlington. God, we know that your hand is already here. God, we thank you for the economy and the merchants, God, that are available, Father God, the jobs that are available. God, we just ask that you continue to bless this city as it moves forward. God, I pray now, God, for this council. God, I pray, Lord, for Mayor Curtis Boyd, and God, I ask, Lord, God, even for the council as they will lead this city, Father, that as coroner Hardy has already said, Father, that it would be as hearts of servant, for your word says, God, that there is no greater one than that serves. So Father, we just ask, God, that we would seek the kingdom of God first, and Lord, we ask, God, that your kingdom come, your will be done in Darlington as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Number four on the agenda, I need a motion for approval of the minutes from the December 3, 2019 council meeting. Do you want to have someone make a motion?
I'll motion that we approve the minutes of December 3, 2019 council meeting.
A second.
All right, I have a vote for everybody to approve it. Our motion carries. Agenda from last time was approved. Number five, we have to have a motion for approval on today's meeting agenda. Do I have a motion for today's agenda approval?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda for Tuesday, January 7, 2020.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Everybody raising your hand? Our motion carries. Approval of the meeting agenda is approved. All right, we'll have the four standing committees, Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association, Lisa Rock.
Mayor and Council, it's a great new year. The Darlington Revitalization Association Board has selected its new leadership team to start 2020. Mr. Pete Dennis will serve as president, and Ms. Nancy Matthews will serve as vice president. We had a successful shop Darlington contest during the holidays with more than $12,000 being spent in connection with the contest, and the average shopper spending more than $120 locally for each entry. This, of course, only includes folks that actually sent in receipts and played the game. The three winners are going to be announced later this week, and they'll appear in the news and press next. We welcome folks to be members of the DDRA. Businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches are invited to join as members. They can give me a call, 843-992-1561, or send us an email to info@buildupdarlington.org. We can feature your news, employee recognition, sales, new products, special hours, and events with people interested in Darlington, as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers through our text and email news alert system. We also are offering for this year a special member referral bonus, so for all new paid memberships for 2020, each one that's paid, the member who referred them will get a ticket to the 2020 Taste of Darlington, and the member with the most referrals will get a packet of tickets to the Southern 500 race. Another benefit of the DDRA comes each month with a breakfast invitation for businesses to network, to learn about the DDRA's programs, and to get feedback for future projects at our monthly Members Breakfast at 8:00 a.m. on the last Wednesday of the month at Taki's Diner. Breakfast will be provided for member businesses at no charge. Non-members are welcome to attend for a nominal donation of $5 per person, and these meetings will continue monthly on the last Wednesday of the month at Taki's Diner through October. Additionally, this year, the DDRA will be presenting an award chosen by its members at the Chambers Annual Banquet on February 6, which I'm sure Ms. Hobbs will mention the banquet details. Other dates to put on your calendar, Wednesday, April 8, will be the annual DDRA golf tournament at Darlington Country Club. Thursday, April 23, will be the Taste of Darlington at Darlington Raceway. And new this year, we will be adding a food truck festival at Darlington Raceway on Saturday, June 6, with more details to follow. Any questions?
Now for the Darlington Chamber of Business Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce is still taking nominations for its annual awards presentation. The awards that we are seeking nominations for are lifetime achievement, citizen of the year, community pride, educator of the year, business of the year, and legacy award, which is presented posthumously. We are accepting nominations until January 15. The Chambers Celebration and Annual Awards Presentation will be held on Thursday, February 6, the Darlington Country Club. Ticket and sponsorship opportunities are still available. This year, we will not have the traditional sit-down dinner, rather a party-type atmosphere with heavy hors d'oeuvres. A sangria-type punch will be available, as well as tea and coffee in a cash bar. We are asking everyone to don their best jeans and sweater. The ladies can put on a strand of pearls. But just come with a celebratory state of mind. We're going to celebrate 2020 year, what Darlington has done in the past, and what we look forward to in the future. So it's not going to be the traditional buffet, speaker. We're going to network. We're going to talk with friends. We're going to mingle, and we're going to have our awards presentation, and then we hope people will stay, have a glass of wine, have a glass of tea, have some hors d'oeuvres, and just enjoy each other. Enjoy Darlington. Enjoy what we have. Just be in a party state of mind, but be responsible. We have a ribbon cutting coming up on the 30th for the Healing Place. We also have two other ribbon cuttings coming up in February. We're planning those dates right now. The Chamber has, in January, and we're not far into it, we have five new members, and I had a new business contact me yesterday. They are coming to Darlington, and they want to join the Chamber, and they are looking for a business facility. So I will be talking with them next week. So we have a new business looking for an office space, which I'm excited about. So I'm going to be calling Lisa Rock tomorrow. That's always exciting. Do I have any questions?
All right, we have three people sign up that wish to speak for five minutes. Mr. Epps?
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Nettles, welcome. You'll probably see my face most of the time here, and sometimes I'll stand up here. I have two things I want to talk about tonight. One is Red Cones that sits on one short street called Camilla Court. There's been one here, one here, one here, one here, one here, one here, one back up here. We got another one today. Why don't you all pull that line from one end, which is a cul-de-sac, say, all the way down to Blue Street, and fix those there in mortal life? You patch them all the time. Why don't you fix them? And the other one is Red Department. I've sat in here and heard you all discuss ball field, ball field, ball field. You're bylaying, you've... You're bylaying, you're sale land. I mean, heck, I don't even know who you sell it to. Who you sell it to? I don't know. And now you got on the agenda for tonight. When are you going to tell us something? Tell us what you do. Tell us we're getting ready to buy land at 109 Camelia Court. And why is that a secret? Where are you going to buy land? Then when you get ready to sell it, why don't you tell us? Hey, remember that piece of land we bought? That we bought? We're going to sell it. But here's what we paid for it and here's what we sold it for. Ain't too bad. But we don't know that. We don't know what we paid for it, don't know what we got for it, don't even know if we got anything for it. We might have gave it away, I don't know. Because you don't tell us nothing. Keep us informed. There's a lot of us that, for Darlington, the city of Darlington is too good. There's a lot of us old people that don't have too much to do, that don't mind getting involved if you let us know. Someone else has some extra time. Don't call me before 10:30 in the morning, though. But I'm up late. If I don't get to watch Hannity at nine o'clock, I'll stay up at one o'clock and watch it. So, I'll be up. You can call me late, just don't call me early. Tell us what you doing about the ball field. Gosh, I've been, I've heard that's fun. Oh, yeah. We're going to do something about the ball field. You ain't done nothing yet? Thank you.
Mr. Epps, I hope you stay around for a few more minutes.
Oh, I will, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Epps.
Thank you.
All right. Diane Pruitt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Congratulations to you all. Proud to see you here and I appreciate the opportunity to come for you and speak to you again this evening. As some of you are aware, my husband and I, Scott Pruitt, own the home at 368 West Broad Street in the West Broad Historic District. And we've been working for a couple of years now on the renovation and restoration of that home to the best of our ability, to the best of what the architecture and the neighborhood and the history of that home requires and demands respect for. I appreciate greatly, from the last time that I spoke before, Council and Mayor Hines, thank you with the deepest respect for addressing issues of the water drains. It took one week to resolve the issues on West Broad Street and Edward Street. We haven't had any flooding issues since and I thank you all sincerely for addressing the problem. I am here this evening to speak again on Historic District because that's of my greatest concern in this city. I am proud that we're working on the home. This is a very important pillar to the community, built in 1890 by Lawrence Reese. And we've discovered some incredible things in that household while we've been working on it. One of the things that I have a concern about that I bring before you this evening is the inconsistency in renovations, in the new construction in the area, in the rules and regulations, and the ordinances that are actually on the books, and where the guidelines are specifically, and who is to maintain the adherence to the ordinances when there is new construction, when there is renovation to an existing structure. We have a beautiful opportunity in front of us with the growth of this city and I would love to see this entire area grow as it was structured originally. I'd love to see the integrity of the Historic District of West Broad Street maintained. I have some concerns about where the integrity in the city, in the maintenance of those guidelines lies. I know we have a Historic Landmark Commission and I know we have ordinances on the books when, and Historic Home has propositions for renovations. We're supposed to show the review board, we're supposed to show the Historic Commission, we're supposed to take the best recommendations, and we're supposed to move forward with that. When there's new construction, there's guidelines for that as well. I am afraid that somewhere down the line, that's gone by the wayside, I'm afraid that our zoning office and our planning office is a little bit overwhelmed and burdened with the majority of the decisions that need to be made. I think it's being passed forward to them and at some point, the ball's being dropped and our Historic District does not have the integrity and its appearance that the ordinances require. I ask the council today and going forward this new year to please take a look at the ordinances regarding the historic preservation of West Broad Street District. You did an outstanding job of making sure that the flooding stopped so that we have the opportunity to restore these homes without further damage. Please move forward with the guidelines that were set in place previously. If ordinances need to be addressed and changed, let's review that and let's take a look at it. If the Historic Landmark Committee needs to meet more often, if they need more guidance, if they need review, if the Historic Landmark Committee no longer has relevance to the city of Darlington, if there's no longer a need, I ask you, Mayor and Council, to review that and to make a decision about how we are going to move forward from today into the future, not only in the West Broad Street Historic District, but in the city of Darlington as a whole. We have an incredible history. I have never before heard anybody read the list of mayors who have sat and governed over this city before and that was pretty stirring. I'd like to see us have the ability to go forward by looking at our past and taking it very seriously. And I thank you. Thank you again for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Some of you may not know me. My name is Jamie Steen. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. On your agenda tonight, you're going to be discussing a playground that's going to be very, very near to our property over at Bowlin Manor. I just wanted to let the City Council and the Mayor know that we have 55 kids under the age of 12 in Bowlin Manor. It's, the closest playground to them is our main office, which is across Main Street, almost two miles away. We have two playgrounds in that area, but none on the other side of town. As the Housing Authority Executive Director, I'm very willing to help the city with providing security cameras that police have access to so that it will be a secure area if you also choose to vote to put a playground over there.
Number eight, unfinished business, a little bit unfinished business. 2018, 2019 audit presentation, Bretonham Group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. For those of you that haven't had the opportunity to introduce myself, I'm Bill Hancock, partner in charge of this engagement. We were engaged to audit the books of the city of Darlington for the fiscal year into 2030, 2019. All of you should have received a page-bound report, that's it, from us. I'm going to go through it, bounce around a little bit. I'm going to make some page number references. I'm going to move a little quicker. If you need me to stop and explain something, don't be afraid to interrupt me. We'll go through this one, hit the highlights of what we need to talk about, and then I'll open it up for questions at the end as well. Okay? Turn with me to page two, please. Probably the number one thing that every municipal municipality looks for when you get an audit done is what's the opinion? You both received an unmodified, also known as a unqualified, also known as a clean opinion for the year, which is good. I told you I was going to bounce around, so let me take you all the way back to page 44 and 45. This letter is also an opinion from your intended auditor where we opine on your compliance with grants, agreements, contracts, and other things that are legally binding to the city control sources. And we also comment and offer opinion on your structure and internal controls, the systems of checks and balances that the city has. You can read on top of page 45, you can see that while our engagement was not specifically designed to test and catch these things, during our procedures, none of these items were included. In other words, when we tested to see if you made your payroll tax deposits on time and in the right amount, we didn't find any errors. And when we tested your court, your municipal court system to see if the fines have been calculated correctly and they've been sent to the state treasurer in a timely manner and in the right amount, we didn't find any errors. And when we find, when we test your water sewer bills that go out, we didn't find any errors in the calculation and the billings or the receipt or the recording of those funds. I could go on with the test stuff, but we don't have all night. There's a few things I want to draw your attention to. This was the second year of our agreement with the city to provide audit services. And now that we've got two years of information that's readily at hand, I wanted to bring your attention to a few things. I'm going to concentrate on general fund, which is the city's main operating account. And I'm going to talk about the water sewer fund. We've got other funds. These are the two major funds that the city does. One's your water sewer operations and the other's the general fund, which is your administration, your police department, streets and sanitation and so on. All right? Turn with me to page six. The information I'm going to talk about is comparing it to last year. You don't have that in front, maybe some of it will be quick. If you'll see the amount of cash and cash equivalents that we have in the general fund up top. Are you all there? That's a figure of $2,377,000. That amount is down about $325,000 from last fiscal year. Okay? Is that good or bad? That's neither. That's as information for the governing body to have and then discuss with management at a time deemed appropriate. Now, if you would, turn with me to page 10. We talked a little bit about this last time we made a presentation, which was 2018. This is an analysis of your budget actual for the general fund. This is what your original final budgets were for revenues by source and your expenditures by department or years. Okay? And you can see the third column, excuse me, the second column to the right is your actual for the year. Look about two-thirds down the page and there's a line that says deficit of revenues under expenditure. Are you all with me? We had a budget deficit of $293,000 this year in the general fund. Again, no big deal, just information. But I think it's worthy to note that 2018, we had a budget deficit of $221,000. So, when you couple those, we've had a budget deficit of over half a million dollars in the general fund in the past two years. What's that mean? That means ask questions, give directives, have management figure out solutions to something if it's something we want to change. You've got the financial available, financial data available to you now, going into your upcoming budget season to do something about this. We haven't always had this information in a current, in a timely manner. Okay? Moving on to page 11. Again, if you'll look at the top of the page in the middle column, where we look at cash and cash equivalents under the water sewer fund, you can see that on hand is about $1,100,000. Well, this time, the year before, we had $1,400,000. So, that's a $235,000 decrease in cash in the water sewer fund. Again, there's no good or bad to that. That's information for this body. And then next, and just as important, on page 12. I want to draw your attention to the line that says loss before capital contributions and transfers. This, folks, this is basically your income statement for your water sewer fund and your stormwater fund. Okay? These are supported by user fees. And you can see that the first, the first half of the page is basically your operating service revenues, less your operating services expenses. Then you take from that your interest expense on the outstanding debt, which is basically what you need to run your system. Okay? If you notice in the water sewer fund, we show the loss of $410,000. In stormwater fund, it was an operating loss of $20,000. Excuse me, not an operating loss, but a loss, a loss before capital contributions and transfers. And so, for the year, that's a $430,000 loss in those user fee revenue-generated funds. Again, not a big deal, just information, but let's put it in context and compare that and add it to the numbers we had for last year. Last year's number was a $505,000 loss in water sewer, $122,000 loss in stormwater, which was a combined $628,000 loss for those two enterprises, which means if you combine these two funds for the two years, we showed a $1,058,000 loss. Now, what does that mean? Is that bad? If it is, what do you want to do about it? I encourage the city to engage somebody to do a rate study. There's several organizations in the southeast that do these. You'll be able to compare what your rates are for water, for water, for sewer, for solid waste pickup, to your peers in the region and also close by. All right? It touch on all municipalities and all different systems. Just so you know whether you're charging enough or whether you're charging too much. Just so you know whether your expenses are in line with what your peers are, or are they too much, or are they not enough? The only way you can make a decision is to get the information. We're going to touch base on...
Can I ask one thing?
Yes.
Over the two-year period, it was a $1,058,000 loss, is that correct what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And that could be, it could be that it was more expenses this year or those two years, or it could be that we didn't raise the rates enough. It could be a number back.
Most likely, Mr. Mayor, it's a combination. Moving along, let me, let me get you folks to turn to page... Let's go to page 34. Last time we made this presentation, we talked a little bit about the city's long-term debt. All your issuance is out there, what they're for, what the interest rates are, the maturities of those debts. As you can see, if you go over to page 35, you can see that, you know, we've got one note that's at 1.5%. We've got another note outstanding, 1.3%. On page 36, we've got general obligation, excuse me, we've got regular bonds. And the highest interest rate we're paying is the city's 4.25%. Matter of fact, most of it is at 2.38, 2.54%. So, as far as doing anything with your existing debt, I don't think you're going to be able to refinance or refund any of these bonds and get any economics from it. You're at the rock bottom part of the interest base. All right? On page 37, you see an amortization going forward of, well, how much principal and interest is going to cost for each year going forward? That's got to be baked into your budget process, right? Because you know how much, you know how much you're going to spend on debt service, so that's something you've got to think about. And on page 38, again, page 37, it amortizes out the governmental or the general fund. And on page 38, it amortizes out your stormwater or your water sewer fund. Now, one thing I wanted to bring to this body's attention, something happened this year that had never happened before. I want you all to turn to page 43. Page 43 is a detailed schedule where we compile a report. The court fines, fees, assessments, and surcharges involved with criminal tickets that have been written and are processed through your municipal court. Okay? The state treasurer's office is always on the lookout for what they consider to be their share of those fines. As a matter of fact, for every ticket that's written, the state gets about 52% of it on average. One item in particular has come hot the past year or two is the amount that's segregated out for victims assistance. The amount that's levied for fines and fees for victims assistance has very narrow uses. The city of Darlington's done a really good job of getting those funds and putting them to the narrow uses that they're allowed for. So, what I'm about to tell you doesn't affect you, but it could in the future if the ways that things are going change. Every municipality that we do the work for, and you can see on the bottom of this page where you're accumulating, you know, a thousand, roughly $1,000 a month plus in victims assistance money, is what we'll call it, right? Well, I have another municipal client where they've been doing this on a little larger scale for several years. They've accumulated about $130,000 of these funds that were sitting in this, you know, sitting in a bank account and they had not used them for any victims assistance purposes. The state office of victims advocacy came down and took that money from the city. The state office of victims advocacy came down and took that money from the city. They walked in and said, "Where is it? Write us a check." You didn't spend it. You collected, you're bound to spend it. If you're not, they're gonna make you forfeit it. Okay? Chief seems to be on top of that. I'm not worried about that with the city of Darlington. As long as things keep going the way they are, and you won't either, I just wanna throw that out there. That's something new I hadn't seen before. I thought it might be of interest to you, too. Folks, that was quick. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are you available for sit-down times on that?
I'm available for sit-down times. I can read, you read by phone.
Do you need to accept the motion? Thank you. Make a motion. Accept the... Two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen audit presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen audit presentation that Mr. Hancock has given on behalf of the Brooklyn Council.
Everybody raising your hand? Alright, but carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counselor, Mr. Board.
Thank you.
New business, be approval of the two thousand and twenty city council meeting schedule. I think the schedule is still the first Tuesday of each month, except for next month, February. February the eleventh will be the second Tuesday. And then in November, November the tenth will be the second Tuesday because of election. And that will be the first Tuesday each month at six thirty. Do I have a motion to accept the schedule?
I make a motion that we accept the, that we approve the two thousand and twenty city council meeting schedule.
I'll second that.
Alright, everybody, if you don't, if you don't, raise your hand. Motion carries? Alright, Bart C., Mr. Andrews. He up for C.D. Playground equipment loan for Bowen Manor.
Yes, sir. Um, this is the loan we talked about at the council meeting in December to fund the playground at Bowen Manor. It's for forty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-three cent. The loan is coming from PD Electric through their outreach program. It's, uh, we pay it back at one percent, which is, I think, a little bit cheaper than what we're paying the hospitality tax bond with. We had to order the equipment before the end of last year to get the pricing that we got, which was about fifty percent off. Um, the equipment is here. And we were just waiting on the installer to come get it installed. But that's, that's what this is for the playground equipment. Yes, sir.
When I looked at the note form, I just have a couple of questions. Or we, it does not set out in particular monthly payment, quarterly payment, or it says payable on the nineteenth, is when it's, of two thousand and twenty-six is when it's due and fully payable.
Howard has, actually has the, um, the schedule payments back there. And I think the, the, the monthly payment is around five hundred and seven dollars a month for seven years.
Okay.
Are we taking the principal and dividing it equal for seven years and then doing one percent on top of that? Or has it been amortized out?
The, the one percent charge is on contribution payment, so there is something added to each month. And so the way it's gonna break out is we'll take it out of athletic equipment, playground equipment, and it'll come out of the regular budget.
Do you want to split it? How, you want to split it on the direct department and...
As of right now, it's just the direct department. And I, for the rest of this budget year, then we can, when we get into the new budget year, we can split it.
And you can, have you got the five hundred and seven dollars or some of that?
I think we can swing it for the rest of the budget cycle.
And that's to, to July, June?
This will be the same amount until the year two thousand and twenty-six. So this is two thousand and twenty, so we got to pay it off by...
About two thousand and twenty-six.
Uh, two thousand and twenty-six, November the nineteenth.
But he was saying you've got enough money to, just to go to June of this year, two thousand and twenty.
Yes, ma'am.
And then from there, how would they pay for it?
We got funded on the new budget.
We'll come out of, like, we'll, we'll have to cut some stuff in our budget to, to make it work for the next six years. But it, it's, we've got a little bit of, of fluff there. We can move some money around just for this. Because this is important for that community out there.
Right. And just because of earlier conversation, so we just clear up that the reason that we are doing this because we thought all this kind of stuff could be done through our hospitality.
Yes, ma'am.
And clear up as to why we need to do this.
We sold the property that we bought for the, the ball fields out there. It kinda landlocked that ball field where it is. And there's no clear path to get it involved with Hampstead Street unless we went way around. So it's not on the, it's not on the path right now.
You said way around. What do you mean way around? You're saying you can't tie it into the trail? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I don't, I, I can't understand why you can't tie it into the trail. I mean, but you're saying it's more feasible to do it this way?
Yes, ma'am. That's...
And this eliminates any question about whether it's a proper use.
Exactly.
Okay. The legality with hospitality money?
Absolutely. If we can, and we can afford it. It's a one percent loan. Basically, it's costing us about four hundred and fifty dollars for the loan. So instead of taking a chance to pay a forty-one thousand dollars back because it was illegal, then we pay it out of this budget, and we don't have to worry about it, and we get a playground out.
Now.
Now. It's sitting at the red department right now, waiting to be installed.
Alright.
So do we see...
So you need a motion. When do you expect, when do you expect the, for it to be installed?
As soon as the install, where it is done, where he is, he's coming to Darlington to put playground equipment up.
Alright.
I do have a motion to accept the playground equipment loan for Bowen Manor.
You most certainly can. I make a motion that, that we approve the playground equipment loan for Bowen Manor.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, everybody in favor? Raise your hand.
One further question.
Yes.
We have approved benches and some tables.
Glad you asked about that. Alrighty. We are actually going to start the install at Terrence Caraway tomorrow. Four benches will be put down there tomorrow, and two picnic tables will be put together. We got them in, and they'll be put there. And hopefully, weather permitting, we'll get to the other park. If not this week, definitely by midweek next week. So everything will be installed.
So, um, was it four benches and, and tables at that park?
It's four benches, two tables.
And there was two benches, no, uh, two benches, uh, one table and two benches at the pool?
Yes.
So when would, when would those be installed?
When, well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna wait for the pool to open back up before we put them back out.
Okay.
Because we'll be able to move them around. We have, yes, ma'am.
Do you want to move it to install?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries for the playground. Mr. Andrews, support D, H.B.A.C. bids for Baldwin Gym and Stanley Gym.
Okay, now, H.B.A.C., both gyms. We've been having a moisture issue at, um, A.W. Stanley. Whenever it is humid outside, it is twice as humid inside before it gets slick. And it is a safety issue. We had somebody come in and take a look from Kent Co. and determine that it was an H.B.A.C. issue. We're just not pushing enough over there right now with the, the couple of units. And to piggyback on that, while that was going on, we lost one unit completely at the Harmon Baldwin Center. The motor, the case for the motor just actually cracked and went everywhere. And one unit on the end is working. The unit right above the door at the office is making the most beautiful sound you've ever heard. And if you got any walkers in here, they will attest to that. But they, what they did was they took parts that they could off of the unit that just went completely bonkers and fixed the two units for the time being. So at both places, we are in dire need of, of this, the H.B.A.C. Just to, to heat cool those buildings.
How old are those units at Stanley?
At least ten years old. I, I would think it's ten years old.
They're residential units.
They weren't designed, they weren't designed for that, just as they are at the, at the Harmon Baldwin Center. They are, they're, they're not designed for that amount of work that they do now. We've been lucky here, more so here, just because those are newer. But they, you know, we, we don't run them at an exorbitant amount. We don't set it on sixty-five in the gyms where it'll just be freezing cold or seventy-five in the wintertime when it's, they blow all the time. We set them and leave them. And, you know, sometimes people complain just because it is a little cool or a little warm in there. But twice the double business.
So you've got four units in one location, five in no location?
Yes, sir.
Do they give a, I don't see a warrant. Do they give a warranty on any of your time?
Um...
There's a limited...
I'm sure they do.
Just ten-year warranty that they get up on the compressor and the main parts, and it's another five-year warranty on leaving.
But you're making the point that it's a residential, even though we have a warranty, and it's ten years.
The ones we're getting are not residential now.
Okay, now I'm talking about, okay.
The ones we have, yeah. They're not installed in the wood.
That's the question, really.
They're doing more what they should.
Are made for commercial buildings and...
Yes, ma'am. And that's one of the reasons that we're having a moisture issue over there is because they're not designed for building for an area that size.
Okay.
And there's some, there's some, um, duct work issues at, at A.W. Stanley just... I, I don't think, I think they changed the units out, but they didn't change the duct, duct work out, so... Oh, this is, this is bringing, this is the new stuff.
Could be done.
I'm not one to put things on hold, you know that. But aren't we supposed to have to re-bid?
This was the contractor that we got to come in to, um, show us what the problem was. And this is the pricing that he gave. I would be glad to go out and get two more, um, bids to bring back to you for that.
Are you required to have to re-bid?
Yes. This, this, unless it's a state contract, and I don't think Kent Co., I don't think that is under state contract.
So what we are proving that you're going back, you get three.
Yes.
You get three.
Please. Please approve. Because it's gonna be hot in summertime. We can stand it right now. When we get a lot of people in there, like in here tonight, it gets warm. But it's just us in there. It's kinda cool.
I'd like the motion that we approve going after bids for the HVAC AC bids for Baldwin Gym and Stanley Gym.
This, this is a motion to bring us back two more bids?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we can do a whole re-bid, however you wanna do it.
You can just want some bids on that.
I, you know, I want everybody bidding apple flowers.
We're fine, but just bring back two more bids.
Okay.
Alright, good. Have everybody raise your hands.
Do we have specifications that everybody's bidding on so we know that we're gonna have apples and apples?
We'll do it right here with what they've already come, because this is what was told would fix it. And that's what Howard told me to, to do, to figure out what makes our car.
New bidders will not have access to the current...
No, but I will get what they're, what they're giving, what we're buying from them.
Right.
This is what we'll need. This is the size unit. This is the duct work that you're gonna have to do. This is the construction where we're closing in. The louvers and stuff at the old gym where they used to open it up with the fans and everything, so...
Just let Kent Co. know that we aren't divulging their, their information.
And we are trying to keep it as local as we can.
Absolutely, always.
Alright, if you'd like, if you don't, raise your hand.
Who is the second?
Howard. Howard, you go. Alright, motion carries for H.B.A.C. bids for Baldwin Gym and Stanley Gym.
Second.
Bring us back two more bids.
Yes, sir.
And number E, new floors, bids for Baldwin Gym and Stanley Gym.
This come about while we were doing the H.B.A.C. The flooring at, at A.W. Stanley was installed ten years ago. And it, it has been well-used. If you'll go over there and take a look at it, there's no, you, you can't paint it, um, because it's the, uh... Yeah, laminate floor. But it was a, a laminate that they put down that was specifically for that type of floor. But we get a lot of wear and tear there. Harmon Baldwin Gym, that floor, it is twenty-five years old. And it is dead spots on the floor. We've tried to do pickleball, and both gyms are unable to because the ball just won't bounce. So we went out and got a quote, uh, for this, for flooring. And it's, it's a pretty good quote for, for both gyms. It'll be a, it's not a wooden floor, but it'll look just like a wooden floor. It's guaranteed for twenty years. And for both gyms, I think it's around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We also want to buy some wall pads to put up in both gyms to make it safer and a volleyball station. So we can start playing volleyball inside the gym at, at A.W. Stanley. Also included in this bid is a floor cleaner, which is what we're supposed to be using with both floors now. And it's like what you see at Sam's Club when you go in there. And it is sitting one that you ride on top of, like they have there. Probably that is one that you walk behind, and it's specifically for these types of sports floors. Even if we don't get the new floors, I would suggest that we buy a cleaner for the gyms so we can, um, we can take care of what we've got a lot better than what we're doing. Because the mopping and, and the, the sweeping is just moving dirt right now. It's not cleaning it like it's supposed to be. Am I right on that? Mr. Seager?
Question to you. Is, is this type floor gonna be serviced better than a wood floor?
Yes. Yes, because on a wood floor, you have to wear certain shoes. If we have a dance, we have to buy a cover for both floors just to cover the floor and make sure that we're not damaging the floor. This floor here, um, you can dance on it on Friday night, play basketball on Saturday morning, as long as you can mop it.
There are certain exclusions, such as does not include trimming doors, not include major floor prep, let alone cleaning or protection.
Our, our floors, our, our floors don't really need doors right now, especially over here and over there. They just, it comes right up to it, and then it, it goes to cement. So there's not, and it's not a big step down. Now, I will say that the foyer at A.W. Stanley will probably have to have some attention when we do the floor because there is about a six or seven, six-inch step down there. Whether we do a ramp down into that foyer to make it safer if we do this, or if, you know, if we just include coming on out with something else to make it even. But, uh, we just replaced the door over there going out, so that would be the next step.
Do they have one anywhere else that we can look at?
This one that he quoted us, they just put down in Wilmington, North Carolina. I have some pictures, but I'm sure he'll be, be glad to let us know. They're out of Charlotte. Take a road trip, go see something.
So it's fifty-six hundred dollars for the, for the package to be able to clean it?
Yes, sir. And, and, and the price of this, we'd have to go out and find somebody else that, that, again, that was, told to get prices, but if we're gonna bid it out, I'd like to give you the chance to bid it out, see if there is something. But again, it would be apples to apples, it would not be a wood floor versus this, because wood floors can be a lot more expensive than this.
What's the useful life of the floor that we have left? How much more use can you?
This one, the, the Baldwin Gym is at the end of its life cycle, I would say. Um, we put it down, well, I say we put, I did, I, I was probably still in college or close to it, um, when that was put down, because I can remember when they put it down, I was refereeing basketball. Um, so if this, if it was guaranteed for twenty-five years, it's got to be at the end of the cycle. This one over here is, I just don't know if it was the grade that, that we needed to get for that gym. Um, it's, it still plays good, uh, it just doesn't look as good as it should. The, and we've had people come in and take a look at it, um, and it's just from wear. It's, it's right under the basketball goals where everything's played right there. So, I mean, it's, I'd hate to do one and not do the other, just so that we can have everything for the next twenty-five years in great working condition.
Are we gonna have the funding to do it?
Um, we got funding. I don't know if you wanna use the funding that I'm thinking about using for it, but it would fall, this would definitely fall under hospitality taxes, um, with, uh, the male alumni using the gyms, uh, especially over there they have in the past. We bring, uh, basketball teams from all over the place to play there.
You need permission to get bids for it?
Please.
I would make a motion that we authorize, it's Andrews, on behalf of Recreation Department to get bids for new floors at the Baldwin Gym and Stanley Gym.
You have a second?
Yes, second.
Uh, no, be right, raise your hand? Motion carries? All right, um. Mr. Gardner, you wanna stay up?
Yes.
All right. For those that don't, uh, Mr. Gardner asked me two and a half years ago at Hardee's, when we were getting a biscuit, because I work out all the time, about helping him with the trail, if I would be interested in helping with a trail. Two and a half years later, we've got it on the agenda. Lawrence has a trail, Hardey's working on trails, is that correct? Okay. Um, and to, to make sure that everybody's clear, that we need our, we need to get rid of the Cone City, correct, Mr. Heps? Okay. And we need to fix our drains, and we need to repair our, our streets, and all that stuff, we need to bring businesses in. To do that, uh, we need to show that we can progress forward. In government, there's certain, certain money in certain pockets that you can't bother with to use it for something else, okay? Hospitality tax and stuff like that, excuse my voice, hospitality tax and things like that, we can use to bring people into, to town, and keep them here where they'll stay with us and become residents. Um, when I was talking with Mr. G, uh, Nettles, uh, one day, he, uh, reiterated that he was interviewing a doctor, and I hope this is okay to say this, I won't say what he, what he said, he's gonna pay the doctor. But, uh, he's interviewing a doctor to stay, and the doctor, I don't know whether he hired him or not, but the doctor was interested in moving to another town, okay? Work here, live somewhere else. Well, that's not what we need. Um, I'm here because of this trail. I'm mayor because of this trail, okay? I got involved two and a half years ago, started seeing that things going on, and so it, it, it drew me in, all right? Um, and so if Mr. Nettles, when he goes to interview someone for a job at Genesis Healthcare, and he can show them this video and say, this is what we're looking to try to do, all right? And then we can start that, and at least be able to walk them out there and show fourteen, fifteen-hundred-foot sections, what we're asking to do today, uh, to start, it's approximately fourteen hundred feet, uh, to start the trail, so you can actually walk out there and see what the trail is like, okay? Then hopefully, that doctor that he's interviewing will say, hey, I've got four kids, and maybe, you know, I'd like to stay here at Darlington and help with that, all right? Or be a part of it, all right? And then he jumps in and helps us and, you know, leads, leads the way. So we've got the funds to do it, we've got the funds to start it. Uh, my understanding, I think that Mr. Gardner can correct me if, if I'm not correct, uh, he's been asking for it for over four years, so it is on the schedule today to see if we can get it started. Um, the video we'll show you right now is about five minutes long, I'm gonna go ahead and show you the whole thing. Um, one of the guys over here, Daniel, videotaped it for me, it's done by drone. Parts that you can't get to, we don't have a hundred percent permission on every little spot yet, that's what we're working on, we're looking to get permission for each part, so then we can go, go further. We have permissions for, I think, all of it, but one section. This is approximately a three-mile loop, uh, that would take us through town, and that would be phase one, once we get it all done. We don't want to be able to start phase, complete phase one, it's not what we're asking for right now, just a small section of phase one. Phase one, we'll go through town, and it's got, actually, we'll be on partly the sidewalk, partly through the woods, whether it's be cleaned up and carried around through the town. Then once that's done, we'll actually be able to spread out, and we'll be able to take you all the way out past the racetrack, all the way over toward Walmart, toward Bulling Manor, toward that direction, if we can finally get some, some easements there, we don't have easements, or, or a hundred percent sure that we can go that direction, but we're looking to see how many different directions we can take it out. Um, and, and with that quality of life, everybody in here likes to walk, and if you've got a two-year-old, five-year-old, ten-year-old, that you don't wanna have to walk on the sidewalk to work on jumping out in the street, that's the purpose of the trail, so that people have activities to do. The trails need to be connected to the playgrounds as we go out, we're trying to add more playgrounds, more activities, more things for people to do, so that the, the residents will want to stay and want to come, um, and live in our, in our city. Um, this is courtesy of Daniel Johnson, I appreciate it, Mr. Daniel.
All right, all, council today, just wanted to do the test section from the Darlington election commission, um, to, what's the street, is it Fountain Street? Is the technical end of the property line, which is directly buttoned up to the library? Um, but that's all this bid is for today, is just to do that one section. I'm just simply asking for a ten-foot wide path, just a little bit packed, um, crush and run, for the purpose of potentially, um, paving in the future if we get the, you know, rail trail grants and the other grants to help fund, um, make it a little bit more , um, good.
All right, the proposal, we got two proposals, one was, had he added extra stuff to it? Uh, we need it right here, Paul.
Got a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so the video that you just showed, this trail is only gonna run that area, and that's the entire, entire trail?
Um, the video that you just saw would be the first phase, that's the circle, the circle for Hardey's City, um, but no, that's not the entire trail. We would dream of expanding to a variety of different areas and having theater lines go off in the different neighborhoods.
So how long, what are you estimating that first phase of that trail is gonna take how long to get it finished? And, and cost?
Yeah, um, I obviously don't have a cost or a time estimate, because I haven't, um, got permission from council to go forward with it, so I wouldn't have those answers for you. But we have one property owner, two, three property owners, and a total, um, in that circle that you saw, that we've gotta get permission from. Everybody else has verbally said they're okay, but, but you know, we would have to get the properties, um, surveyed and, and actual trail line, you know, specifically laid out, so, you know, we have a, we disagree with them, essentially, with them.
So, the areas that you just showed on this video, show this trail running strictly through North Darlington, not that any of this trail affects South Darlington. Not that there's nothing of South Darlington included in this million-dollar trail.
This is back, just let me answer your questions for you. Um, this is the first phase that connects it to Hampshire Street Park. The trail that we're asking for right this moment is a fourteen-hundred square, approximately fourteen-hundred feet, um, and will cost approximately ten thousand dollars.
That wasn't the question.
So answer your question.
A lot, a lot of this, I don't wanna say, a lot of this trail that we just showed you is already done because it connects to the Williams and Hart, and a lot of it is also, it's three, that's a three-mile loop. And out of that three-mile loop, there's probably, again, we don't have an exact number yet, and we're not asking to try to do the whole trail at this moment, we would like to go and get the whole trail ready and get there. Uh, but what, to start with, we'd like to be able to show people what we're planning on to do it, okay? And this is our ultimate goal, just like, our ultimate goal, because me and Mr. Gardner drove out there to Bulling Manor, is to try to figure out a way to get it all the way over to Bulling Manor, all the way over to Walmart, all the way back from Walmart, all the way back down Smith Avenue, all the way back over to the other side of the racetrack down by Maplewood, to where the trail would actually connect the whole, the whole town. And so phase one, what we're looking to try to do is, what we call phase one today, is just fourteen-hundred feet. Then once we show you we get that, then we're gonna be working on a, um, a grant to see if we can get it, we don't have to spend the money on hospitality funds, but we have to spend the money on hospitality funds, then at that point, we can try to get this phase done and go ahead and start working on the next phase, and get other companies to start helping us with trying to progress it out, um, into the whole town. Because our, our goal is to, is to complete, and get it to your side of town, the racetrack side of town, all, all with it.
And I might point out one thing. That, when I was on the highway commission, thirty-five years ago, we used, um, highway safety funds to put in the sidewalk from the top of Cashway out to the country club, is used by the entire community. That fourteen-hundred feet connects to probably ten miles of sidewalk going through the entire town. And right now, I can tell you, the Cashway part that went down, just that one thing is used by the entire, um, community. People who like to walk and walk along the distance, that one section just connects up to so many miles of already-done sidewalks.
And the, and the purpose of starting here, my understanding, was there's an actual railroad bid there, so we're trying to start to the bid and be able to move out, because the other parts going out, we're gonna have to actually go onto the sides of the roads and through other people's property to get along, to go further out, because at this point, um, if you're afraid to do the whole thing, you get the whole three-mile loop.
Isn't there a public hearing required for a project like this?
No, ma'am.
I think so.
No, ma'am.
And have we gotten three bids on this that's required?
We've got two bids so far, yes, ma'am.
Are we gonna get three?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
So this is a, an open forum meeting, this is not being conducted like regular city council meeting? You just raise your hand and talk.
If I, until I, until I get too many, yes, ma'am. If you have a question, I'll be glad to. All right, yes, ma'am, just back.
I'm just gonna say this, and I'm gonna leave it alone until I see a, um, showing of, of where this trail is gonna go through South Darlington, because if we're spending millions of dollars of money, of taxpayers' monies, of grants, and that we gotta match, and whatever the case may be, it should affect all sectors, and it should go somewhere through South Darlington.
Yes, ma'am, would you have, would you have, uh, you could draw that?
Yeah, and half of this circle of the first phase is all in your district, literally half of it, if not three-quarters of it. Um, and so we got a couple other theater lines that are gonna be going through your district, if you'd like to help us out with the, um, African-American cemetery that's beside the city property, we can actually access South Darlington, um, if you'd like to help us get access across their property.
You was read it, the, the diagram just showing me Diamond, Diamond Hill, or whatever it's called?
Right, yes, ma'am.
You was five feet from Bulling's Mountains, because you could've went to Bulling's Mountains.
And we did it.
We drug it literally Christmas week to try to figure out a way to get it to your property.
That was phase one. This is back, that was phase one, and me and Mr. Buck Gardner drove all the way to Bulling Manor.
And it'll be fifteen years, ten years, putting it in, getting it to, and millions of dollars, and it's still in the face of South Darlington.
All right, we gotta, uh, take a motion, to see if we can start the fourteen-hundred feet for the trail. Uh, not a motion.
How much did we approve on fourteen-hundred feet, ten-thousand-dollar bid for the trail?
Okay, we'll get a third bid.
I guess what we will be approving at this time would be a third bid for the fourteen-hundred feet.
Right.
Not approving anything until we get that third bid.
I'm fine with that. I would admit my motion to, um, propose, we motion to, um, go after a third bid, the Darlington multi-use trail map for the fourteen-hundred-foot Central Trail.
You have a second?
I would second that.
All right, I'll in favor for, uh, the Darlington multi-purpose use trail for us getting a third bid. Motion carries? Thank you, Mr. Andrews. All right, uh, new business, G, discussion of city administration building use of Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce headquarters, hospitality funds?
Hear you, hear you, hear you. Were you gonna speak on this?
Nobody asked me to. I haven't been involved in this company, but I would be glad to.
We have been approached by the city, um, to the Chamber of Commerce about, um, a proposal to relocate into the White House that Mr. Garland's currently in, his office in, which would open up space on the city square for new businesses.
We can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, we've been approached by the city, there has been, um, no official proposal, and I think that the city's, um, thought process is if the chamber moves into the White House, then you'll be able to use hospitality funds to fix up the White House. Um, there again, I'm not speaking for the, I mean, the chamber is not doing a formal statement, because we have not gotten anything in writing from the city. So this would be Mr. Garland and, um, Mayor Boyd to, to make the, um, proposal to the chamber.
Now, I think from our meeting the other day, you were saying that we want to discuss with the board if they were willing to do it, or?
Yes, we are.
See if everybody was in agreeance, was why I found it a little.
Yes, we will entertain a proposal in writing from the city.
Any discussion on that?
Do we have anything to discuss at this point in time? It seems like we've, we've got to have capitalism, he can get some proposals sent to us.
We, as the chamber, cannot do anything until we're getting something in writing from the city. So, but I think from the chamber's, um, perspective, we are willing to entertain anything the city would like to propose in writing to the chamber.
But this is something the chamber wants?
No, ma'am, this is something that we were approached by the city, by Mr. Garland.
Okay, see, we, we didn't know anything about that.
But I think they're here tonight to make, they wanted to discuss it.
I, I can comment. The executive committee met with myself, um, this week, and apparently Anna, Mayor Boyd, Howard Garland, Nancy Matthews, met earlier this week, and have come up with a proposal to use hospitality funds to move the Chamber of Commerce into the administrative building. Um, the executive committee has said they would be willing to entertain such a proposal, um, in writing, and then the Chamber of Commerce Executive Committee would then respond back in writing. But we were the ones that were approached, and apparently it is for hospitality funds to be used to... to be used to fix the administrative building.
How much of the, well?
I don't know.
I think I need to have you know more than I do.
Yeah.
I just need for presentation.
No, sir, I think you know probably as much as I do. These meetings were done without me. They, they didn't approach me, they approached our Anna and Mr. Garland and Mayor Boyd were the three that were in the discussions, where it probably shouldn't have come to me, but that's okay, I mean, I, I'm.
I just, what my position is, is that if the city is going to act on something and make a proposal to you, it needs to be presented to city council and the mayor prior to an agenda item where we're discussing, but we don't have any information on it.
The purpose of putting them?
I would make a motion to table item nine G until the city receives a report from city administration as to this proposed use, funding, space, et cetera, as to how it would be proposed, that it be presented to the chamber.
For real? I mean, this is something we have.
Let me, let me clarify real quick. The purpose of them putting us on the agenda was to bring it to everybody's attention for you to discuss and further.
I have no problem with that, but we don't have anything to discuss until this.
And I was gonna say, not, not, for us to, to bring to, to your attention.
Yeah, and then, and then see, what I'm getting out of it is that it's a proposal to try to see how we can fix up the administration building. It see, it's not about, and, and if you go into another city department to be able to solve a problem, you know, you're not giving us any, any input here. You've already decided how you want this building to be done. See, I don't have, we don't have any input then, that's the problem I have.
Right, hold on one second.
But it's not about the chamber that I'm talking, I'm simply saying that, that from what I'm understanding, the reason for this is to be able to, to repair the administration bill, use the hospitality money for that, so you're using the chamber, offering them a chance to move in it so you can do it.
All right, Mr. Green, I'm gonna let Mr. Garland explain, because he was the one that brought this up, sir.
Right now, there's a motion out there to table item nine G, it has not gotten a second.
Second, that was, we all said.
Everybody, hold on one second, let Mr. Garland speak, for this minute. Let Mr. Garland speak for this minute.
We need, that was the discussion on the motion.
Elaine, let Mr. Garland speak, quick.
Last summer, the chamber building had some mold issues for about two to three months, and an offer was made at that time to the chamber for them to use part of the administration building, their headquarters, until they got their mold issue fixed on the square. Now, out of that came the idea, why not have them use a conference room next to my office to maybe use for space, or possibly the upstairs? The idea being if we had DERA in the chamber in one building, we could have a visitor center, which we could promote on Interstate ninety-five, can help draw people in one place, it would be a one-stop shop for those coming in to, who want to move here or find out information about Darlington, we'd have someone downstairs to be an official greeter. It's just the idea of having one place for everyone to come for everything Darlington, that's the idea.
We've got a motion to table it for us, further discussion in a second. All in favor to table it for further discussion?
Second.
Motion, table that, and do the discussion. Thank you. Department heads, anybody particular want to start?
My name is Johnna Carter, I don't know if all of you know me, but I am the city clerk. I've been here since two thousand and seventeen. I have an assistant, her name is Shanice Applewhite, she's been here since two thousand and seventeen, too. We work really good together, we interact with the police department every day, we handle all the tickets that the city runs. We take up all the money for those tickets, we turn it into the treasurer's office, and it goes wherever it goes, we don't know where it goes. We also work with the judge in the courtroom every week when we have court on Wednesday at nine AM. We do bonds out at the jail, we assist him out at the jail with all the bonds. Shanice and I rotate every other weekend at the jail to do bonds out at the jail. We are now, since Shanice and I got here, we have turned over to electronic filing with our tickets. That way we don't have to box them up every month, send them to the DMV so they can put them in, it's all electronic now. It's working out really good. Shanice and I have caught up everything, everything is working really smooth, we're not behind on anything. By the end of the week, the court is over. We've put in all the dispositions, we've sent it off, we've done everything that we need to do with that. I don't know if you want me to give you any numbers. This month, I just finished the monthly report, our office took in fifteen thousand, no, sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars this month. That's basically, that's about how much we bring in. Just depending on the traffic.
Fifty-plus percent go to the street.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and, and I'm not sure what those numbers are because I give these reports to the treasurer, and she takes care of all that, so all I can tell you is what we take up. And just to let you know that Shanice and I work with the police department, we do really good with them, if you guys have any questions, just let me know. Don't let.
What department is this?
This is the clerk of court.
Clerk of court?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I didn't hear that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Karen Carroll, I represent the Street Sanitation and Garbage Department of Darlington. We do collection of garbage, repairing the street potholes, try to keep as many arch cones off the street that we can possibly do. We cut the grass, maintain the street signs, support all of the city events with logistical support, Sweet Potato Festival, the race, stuff like that.